I would like to call the Thursday, January 30th, special meeting to order at 6:02. Mary, can we have a roll call?
Sure.
Chairman Pappa Holter.
Here.
Vice Chair Candelaora.
Here.
Secretary Siena.
Janice Bolzamo.
Here.
Vincent Mace.
Marcy and Afrio.
Here.
Cynthia Wright.
Here.
I'd just leave the flag. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per Section 1-225 of the Connecticut general statutes as permitted by Section 1-206 of the Connecticut general statutes to discuss Agenda Item 9, negotiations update regarding the proposed contract between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford Federation of Teachers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Then I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract between the North Bramford Board of Education and the North Bramford Federation of Teachers from July 1, 2020 through June 3, 2023.
Second.
Oh. I said June 30th, sorry, June 30, 2023, sorry. It's not second.
Discussion? Mary, can we have a roll call?
Sure. Chairman Pappa Holter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Candelaora.
Yes.
Janice Bolzamo.
Yes.
Vincent Mace.
Yes.
Marcy and Afrio.
Yes.
Cynthia Wright.
Yes.
Okay. I want to thank Sean and Marcy for their time, efforts, and energy in coming together to put this contract in place. It was a process, and I think both sides would agree that everyone worked hard to come up with an equitable and fair agreement for all parties involved. So, thank you.
Welcome.
That being said, Martha's going to start off with the budget.
Yep.
This, as you've heard over the last several months, has been a lot of changes with process. I think you'll see that with the PowerPoint and the handouts, the data that you're going to be given. I think you're really going to like, you're not going to get this, but you're going to like
Yes, you are.
the formatting of the process and how user-friendly it is. And there'll be opportunities for the administrators to engage in questions of anything specifically that we're talking to. So, I'm going to let Martha start, and she'll pass out.
Yeah, while Bruce is getting the PowerPoint ready for me, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to be here again. Everybody's been very welcoming to me, and I appreciate that. It's been a very busy four months, and I especially want to thank the administrators who have put up with me for the past four months. They've been very patient, and they've been dealing with all of the changes and new procedures with grace and understanding. And I also want to thank their secretaries too, because they've been getting their share of the change as well. The presentation you're going to see and I'm going to hand out in a minute is going to look very different from what you've seen in the past. I hope that you find it informative, and I hope you find it easy to follow. And then, we're going to do the presentation, and then we'll save questions for last.
I was going to ask that.
Yeah. I'm nervous, so if I can talk and then ask questions later, we'll be good. So, you just take one and pass it down, please.
It's a friendly crowd. It's very reasonable. Now, as we mentioned in our operations meeting, Pride Reach Board Meeting, we basically went through every line item and put accounts in the proper place and started from ground zero building up. So, 12 months from now, two years from now, this process will be so streamlined and so familiar to administrators that it's going to be much easier than it was this year, because things were all over the place. And it was a great deal of education on Martha's point to get the administrative team up to the new way and the new methodologies of what we're doing and how we're doing it to be more transparent, more efficient moving forward. And I know the board is going to support the changes that we made.
We also realize, Martha, that everything's not going to be done. It's a continuous process. So, like, we know that. So, as you keep making changes or tweaking to improve efficiency, we know that. So, like, what you're saying tonight is going to maybe be different any year from now.
Yes, yes.
Maybe in a week.
Maybe in a week, not enough.
So, basically, I'm going to just walk through, obviously, with our philosophy, vision, and then you know we have our strategic plan that we have posted in the buildings. And we try to focus the attention on all of the dollars being spent on supporting our vision, our mission, and our strategic plan. So, that being said, the administrators are charged with trying to focus on the safety of our students, any new programs, class size, things that we feel are critical to the success of all children, whatever the level, whatever their academic backgrounds are, so that every student has the same experience that goes through our pre-K 12 curriculum. Our beliefs that education is a shared responsibility with students, teachers, staff, parents, and the community in our communication, trying to get as many active stakeholders involved. We want all students to be able to learn. They have unique abilities and talents. They're worthy to be recognized and developed. Students and staff have the right to a safe, respectful, challenging environment conducive to learning. Our priorities, we had conversations about goals and district goals and things that we'd like to see in all the subject areas, not just the core areas. So, we're continuously looking at our pre-K 12 curriculum. We want to continue with high-quality instructional practices. You know that Tracy has spoken on numerous occasions prior to board meetings about professional learning opportunities, professional development. A couple of them are listed, and we continue to try and prove upon. World Language, as you know, we've discussed the possibility of moving the 7th grade world language down in Spanish. Project Lead the Way, bringing that to the lower grades and then bridging that with grades 6 to 8, so that we have a continuum of Project Lead the Way, which will really trumping all of the STEM and also increase computer science opportunities. We looked at the review, which now we've completed, and the revision of our new schedule between end levels and high school. We have built that schedule. We're now doing the late work to build schedules for students that have the same start and end times between the buildings. Our primary goals were to increase offering to our students by using the existing staff levels, so that our efficiency with cost would remain the same, but opportunities would increase and the ability with our new contract to have the teachers teach the additional class, to have a flex period, and be able to have more one-on-one contact with students which I believe will support our goal. And then, our updated expansion of technology tools in the district. Currently, with the Chromebooks, we have students in grades 5 through 12 that have Chromebooks. So, if you do the math of seven grades at 150 students, you can see that we have quite a bit of technology out there in our students' hands. Budget priorities, I'm not going to read those. I'll go through best practice, structural resources. Go ahead. Class sizes, obviously, we continue to be our focus as we enroll and enrollment trending, so that we are physically responsible with our FTEs, with teachers, based upon trends. We had Mesdeck do forecasting for us as part of our revision at the high school. As we move that project forward, as you know, we're going to be meeting shortly, in the next couple of weeks, in February, to hear more about, you know, that potential. We wanted to make sure that we're on top of class sizes and where we're trending over the next 10 to 20 years. We talked about the schedule and then extracurricular activities and maintaining a comprehensive program in athletics and extracurricular through the music program and other areas that we're constantly reviewing. Okay? And Martha is going to start with the numbers.
So, this budget for 2021, we're asking for a total of $33,144,863. That's a 2.98% over the current year, or an increase of $959,000.
I want to just jump in, Martha.
Sure.
So, when we started this process three weeks ago, we had my administrative team, we were at 13.4?
Actually, 14.
14%, when we started this, two weeks ago. And it was a very emotional, interesting administrative team meeting that day, because we're looking at, okay, what's going on here, 14%? And what are we doing? What are we adding? Where is this coming from? So, when we broke that day, you know, Martha charged the administrators with going back and then redefining and looking at every staff member that came into our building to make sure that everything aligned with where we were at with personnel. And we started from there and just culled through, and I have to recognize Tracy as well, the two of them over the last week have spent incredible amounts of time. What's duplicated? What was here? Why did it get moved? How did it get moved? And we were able to pare this down to under 3% in the last two weeks. And I think that's a testimony to the direction that this process is going in. I had to add that, Martha.
Sure.
She doesn't want any of my talking.
So, as Scott said, we basically pulled apart every line in this budget to see what we actually needed. From salaries, we looked at actual employees and positions down to benefits to make sure that the calculations were correct and that the right allocations were there. We looked at utility lines. What was budgeted? What has been historical? What's our year-to-date? So, we looked at all trends for utility, purchase service. Actually, looked at the copier contract, which was very interesting, and had the opportunity to contact a vendor on the state contract list. He was able to do a walkthrough, did an evaluation of our machines, and gave us actual pricing on the possibility to change those out for significant savings. We reviewed the transportation contract. I got actual estimates on all the property and liability policies from our broker. And we looked through all of the utility bills, telephone, cellphone, internet, postage lines, again, past expenditures, and year-to-date. So, we really took a zero-based budget approach to this and built it on actual. We also looked at our projected enrollment. So, currently, there are 1,686 students in the district. And for next year, we are anticipating 1,671, which is a decrease of 15 students overall throughout the district. So, how is the $33 million proposed budget broken down? As you can see, $19 million of that is salaries, and $5.6 million of that is benefits. There's $1.7 million in tuition. Now, the next categories are lumps that I'll explain. So, Buildings and Grounds is basically everything that has to do with the actual building or the property that it sits on. So, it would be your utilities, anything, purchase service, all your oil, heat, propane, electricity. Learning programs consist of all materials, supplies, and services associated with an instructional program. So, anything to do with your English, math, science, art, PE, health. Your support programs are all materials, supplies, and services that are associated with support. So, things like guidance, nursing, psychology, occupational therapy, speech, library, special ed, evaluations, testing, all those things fall under support. Administrative consists of professional services such as legal, anything that has to do with the Board of Education itself, property liability coverages, anything to do with the financial system or the HR, so our attendance tracking system, our actual financial system, postage, advertising, anything that has to do with the administrative aspect of the district. And then, of course, transportation is transportation. Want to make sure that I point out that in those areas that I just described, there are no salaries. All of the salaries are in the salary line. So, when we're talking about the various areas, those are just the things, not the people. So, Buildings and Grounds is $1.6 million. Learning Programs is almost $1.3. Support is $283,000, almost $284,000. Technology is $457,000. Transportation is $2.5. And administratively, it's $547,000. So, all of those areas added up together give you the total budget of $33.1 million. So, and we could look at it a different way and say, well, where does the increase come from? Where are all the changes? So, there's a graphic there, and then there's the numbers. You'll see the biggest change actually is coming from tuition. And that is because we currently have some special ed students that we didn't budget for this current year, because they're new or unanticipated. And of course, we're budgeting for them next year. So, that is why that number is so high. You may be drawn to the salary line and say, there's got to be a mistake there. There's only $51,000 attributed to the increase. And that is correct. I want to say I checked it like seven times. And the reason is, is because when we were going line by line by line, we drilled down, and the salary numbers now actually reflect the actual people and positions that we have. So, there was a lot of cleaning up that we did there. Benefits is $135,000. This budget does contain a 4% increase, estimated increase for medical trend for our self-insurance. I do not have actual numbers yet, but believe that 4% is average. So, I put that in there. And then, of course, if we get a lower number from our broker, then we will be able to reduce that. Buildings and Grounds, it looks like it's a negative, but again, it's really not because of the shuffle of things that we did. So, previously, things like telephone, postage, cellphone, those were all charged to Buildings and Grounds. We've taken those, and we've moved them to administrative, as they should be. This budget does not have any improvement lines allocated. So, the current year, there's about $65,000 in the 1920 budget for building improvement facility-wise. The proposed budget does not have those lines. So, had I put them in at the same amount, it would have been pretty much flat. Learning Programs is $77,000 increase. Support Programs is $139,000. Technology, $17,000. Transportation, $221,000. I believe most of that is made up of the increase for special education students that we're forecasting for next year because of who we currently have now. And Administrative is $65,000.
Before we switch screens, obviously, with the tuition change, and I'm going to ask Suzanne, just to speak to, obviously, in very generic terms, some of the training that we've seen and we've discussed with numbers in the district and some of the things that have created our increase.
So, we have, currently, we have 15 students who are placed in our district places. So, we have two pieces of the tuition that have increased. One is the special education private tuition that is listed in, we would say, non-public is private as well as private as public, contributing programs that are like ASIS programs, who are being characterized under the form of part of the tuition. So, last year, the end of the year, we had five replacements that we had not anticipated. Their numbers were very high. And you may recall, when we analyzed the budget, that one of the things we needed to reduce from our budget was the full-time board-certified behavior analyst because of the number of replacements that we had not anticipated at that time. This year, we have one student who's graduating. We've had a little bit of movement where one student moved out during the school year, one student moved return, but other students have then taken their places. We have two anticipated students before the end of this school year. With significant disabilities that require significant levels of support, we've added a variety of interventions for most students over the course of the school year, really used all our resources and spent considerable time trying to try different strategies to help those students be able to maintain their attendance in parent-led schools. And unfortunately, we'll need to make those places. The tuition increase is related to an increase in the tuition from those private schools, first of all, as well as the additional placements. Some legal arrangements have had to be made for particular students in terms of the settlement of those students' placement. We continue to make efforts in thinking about bringing kids back to our district. I have a couple of students right now that we're thinking about. Will they be ready? We're going to talk about that transition. Again, maybe every effort to try to help our students return to more than that, because we very much want them to be a part of our school district. And so, when we can do that, we try to do it in a very clinical way, have them transition part-time, and then gradually coming back to us at time. So, that's always our goal when we place students in a district. And I am heartened by the fact that we're working on that with a couple of students. It's hard to know how far we'll get by the end of this year. And certainly, I needed to budget for those students because their current placements need to reflect that at this time.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any questions for Mr. Wetter?
So, if you wanted to look at how the budget is made up in a pie formation, this is how the pie would be cut up. Naturally, the salary is the biggest piece, followed by benefits and transportation. And then, you'll see the other smaller pieces of the pie are labeled there for you. The budget by location, again, is listed here for you. We broke it out by all four buildings, Jerome Harrison, Totucket, the intermediate school, and the high school. The district is also listed there. And the district is made up of services that reach beyond one building. So, it's pupil services, it's technology, it's transportation, benefits, insurances, you know, property liability insurances, and other professional services. And then, again, district is the biggest piece because of those big pieces, special ed, transportation, insurance, followed by the high school, the intermediate school, and then Totucket and Jerome are pretty equal.
And the high school, for obvious reasons, with the cost of athletics and the classes offered, science labs, everything that goes into a comprehensive high school that increases the cost considerably.
Okay, status quo. So, I know this term is familiar to you, but this is probably a different way of showing it. This list identifies all of the items that are new initiatives or new expenses in the budget. So, you could see up at the top, our increase, as we said before, of 2.98%. And then, I listed out for you what the new items are in this budget and then took them out. And you'll see, if we did that, the increase would be 2.38% or $32.9 million.
So, obviously, the initiatives that we had discussed would be the increase of a Spanish teacher at the DAS to offer that full year of Spanish. Obviously, we started at 8th grade this last year, so we have two grades. The students have the opportunity to earn that credit in the 8th grade year, so they would go into high school with one full credit of Spanish. So, looking at graduation requirements, they could fulfill their graduation requirements earlier. If they wanted to get to the advanced placement in Spanish, they'd have a leg up with that one year there. And that was something I know the board was very supportive of. The Project Lead the Way, looking at the pre-K 5, that is, it's a prescribed curriculum that you do the professional training in the summertime, and you purchase like the kits, and then that would be embedded in the curriculum in those buildings. Ideally, we'd like to have a staff member trained to do that, and that person is not included right now. And the way that that potentially could work is if we had a retirement. We do not have a retirement at this time in any of the buildings that a person has let us know. It's usually the second half of the year that you would get notification that a person is going to be fired. We usually keep that quiet until the spring and giving us ample time. If it was something that we could repurpose, we would then come back to the board in this process for some guidance and direction, and the potential for a pre-K 5 person to go through. As you know, at the high school, we have the full engineering program. We have two certified tech people at the high school. And the ASIS also have one certified Project Lead the Way teacher at the middle school. We're not doing Project Lead the Way at middle school right now. It's something that we're, you want to have that conversation, and that's why we see that. So, I'm going to let Tracy speak to number three, Spanish AP.
She's up next.
Okay, so, in a segue, into Tracy.
Obviously, you can see the numbers associated with some of these programs. The justification for these programs are the following slides. So, for example, we spoke of the expansion of world language program to grade 7 that would help us with achieving the Connecticut State Department of Education's graduation requirements upon examination of our intermediate school students' experience and obviously, with research supporting foreign language instruction. There has never been a doubt that if we are able to provide Spanish instruction to the lower-level grades that we would, it's just making sure it balances and that all of the costs in human resources as well as supplies and time of students makes it an effective decision and an inefficient decision. So, with the new schedule, we've been able to work some things so that it will enhance the students' core instruction, not necessarily take away from it in terms of time. Saying that, we were able to move forward with more work looking to move forward the program and would be looking for a new teacher to support that program. We also look to expand student support and advanced placement offerings. One of the advantages to the new schedule is that there is a support flex period that allows to support students, and everyone would be available during that time to receive support. But we're also looking to implement some new courses. For example, the Advanced Placement, U.S. Government Politics course, which really, in addition to our other AP courses, it gives students exposure to expectations of college work as well as gives them really a deeper understanding of our country's government. It allows students to have informed decisions or make informed decisions, to understand and develop their own views as well as understand their parents' views and why people believe things the way they do. Obviously, in this politically-charged world that we have right now, that's one of the courses that we honestly believe that will help students academically as well as throughout their lives. Another example of the new course is Writing in Action, which is a senior-level writing course. It's meant to help students develop the writing skills that they would need to be successful in the real world, as such as developing emails, how to convincingly write letters of intent and recommendations, to work effectively in a work environment in terms of making presentations and having proposals, using website applications or making their own websites. These are two examples that are before. And these, all of the things that I'm discussing in these new initiative justifications were spoken about in our curriculum committee meetings. And then, were usually spoken about during the public meeting when we spoke out on our plate.
So, Mr. Stuffer, if we could, before we go to the pre-K 5, just a quick update. If we're advanced, if the U.S. government comes on and run that class, I believe we would be at 12 APs?
I believe we would be 11 to 12, depending on the year. So, I was going to read that to you. Music theory, which we have a lot of in the years now. We have a staff over training.
We have a staff member trained. Typically, AP Physics runs every other year, depending on the year, it could be eleven or twelve. And as Ms. Wood said, those two courses are examples that hit both into the spectrum, if you will. The Writing in Action course could be targeted at kids who are in our Bridges program that really would transition probably to the workforce or to a tech prep program after high school versus a four-year university. So you're very hand-held applicable course for right after graduation. And the AP Advanced, the government course, would be, we've done some surveys, it's currently CI class, and there's some interest for kids that are already in school that would look to take that as an additional course. Now, I know that we had looked at partnering with Sutter and Marking Courses for...
We have three kids now that we've been on that agreement before we had the super amendment at Sutter this year, so we're going to keep moving that along. That falls in with the new graduation requirements for classes coming up next year as well.
And we are still partnering with UConn with the English...
PC.
PC. And that's been a very successful course. Any questions on the new AP and Writing in Action at the high school?
We also did discuss a construction, it's home repair.
Home repair.
Home repair. So there are other courses. Those are just examples, as Mr. Stuffer said, to see that students, all students, would be supported by some of the initiatives that Stuffer was looking at. The next is Project Lead the Way, which we just recently spoke about in our curriculum council. And right now, one of the catalysts for this decision and the need for this is that in August of this year, amazingly, the consortium that Hampton, the Public Schools in North Bradford were in disbanded. There was no notice. There was great surprise on the part of Hampton and us. So we were really forced to squat and get something very quickly. So with respect to Carol Moore, we're doing this. They went out and they really helped secure some resources and helped the teachers provide instruction for those, but they're not as in-depth as they would be. Not only that, our students, the science kids that we used from the consortium, really have then benefited from the hands-on experience and instruction those kids provided. So we're looking at Project Lead the Way. Our science, two science volunteers at the high school have gone through the program to make sure that it is aligned to the state standards and NGSS, and it is. We have also discussed how students will benefit from this. And as Scott mentioned, we talked about different ways that we could bring this program in, in terms of human resources and staffing. We would provide training over the summer. The initial resources would be a large cost, but I have already started to work to help manage those costs using purchases that I can make this year. And the training and resources would allow all of our teachers access to increased learning and things that, regardless of what subject they're teaching or where they're teaching, would benefit the teaching staff as well as the students.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the high school has Project Lead the Way. TV, so pre-K through five, we'll get it. Does the middle school have it?
They do. They just, it's not used as a core curriculum. It's used within their tech department, their allied arts department. So they use modules of Project Lead the Way. So, for example, robotics, they use that within that tech debt, so it's not separate courses. Where at the high school, they're standalone courses, and they complete the entire course. So Project Lead the Way for the middle school is meant more to be an add-on or a universal, we call it allied arts. Where at the high school, they're full programs, but it's not in place of science. It's additional.
And then how does the pre-K through five work? Like, now they're kind of getting...
So pre-K through five is very much like the science kid mentality, but it's...
So it's part of their science.
So it would be, there's two ways to look at it. And obviously, it would be whichever way is best for our students and that we're able to do. So we have the current science instruction that would take the place of. The best case scenario, quite honestly, is to put it in and have someone, an expert, do it for all the students. And that's what we look to do if we're able to do so.
Okay.
So the training for Project Lead the Way, they go right to University of Payton, which is a major sponsor of the program. And I believe our teachers...
Yeah, for the higher, for middle school, they would. If we look to do this and have all the teachers participate, it would be cost-effective for me to have, because there are people, you may have them come to the district, just as we did with Columbia Reers and Raiders Workshop, and have them train all teachers, pre-K through five. And that's what I would look to do.
A teacher, if a teacher goes to UNA, it's usually, what, two weeks, full day?
I don't know this program exactly, but yes, it's usually upwards of between, sometimes we've had to go to Buffalo University, WPI, where I pay for, obviously, the teacher's time, board, room and board. So some of the courses, the cost is $10,000 to train, where I would be booking to train the entire staff or... And then finally, we have Sylvester Math Math right now at the middle school. The grant enabled us to bring this program. It is the program that the state at this point is recommending. And the reason is, is that, one, it is vetted by professional organizations, Math Math Education professional organizations, including Ed Reports, including NCTM, as one that meets the rigor and coherence, as well as content of the Common Course Gate standards. One of the things that we find most interesting about this program is it really helps teachers facilitate student learning in terms of having students do math and solve problems that are both in mathematical and real-world contexts, and they construct arguments and defend their reasoning, allowing them to really develop their critical thinking skills, as well as their abilities to solve problems and reason effectively. So this is, we're seeing success at the middle school, so we'll put those to our middle school people who just got their benchmark results back, and they are very impressive compared to where we were. Our teachers are liking the experience. It's definitely hard, and it's a lot of work, but that being said, it's worth the investment. The investment is both professional development as well as resources, but the resources are actually a little less than what one would expect because they're an open resource company, meaning you can go online as a parent and get all their books and all of their things right online. So it really is helping. And quite honestly, as I mentioned, the state is encouraging as many districts as possible to kind of move this way.
So we do have a capital request in addition to the regular general operating budget. On the next slide, there are a list of projects that we would be asking for, for consideration. We did not include anything in regard to the high school because of the potential of a construction project there. We did get preliminary estimates, but we did not get actual bids. So on the next slide, and I apologize it looks so tiny, but there are several projects there. So we are asking for asbestos abatement at Totucket Valley, along with some parking lot paving. At Jerome Harrison, we're asking for an air conditioner cooling tower and compressor replacement. Also, a lighting upgrade, which would be for the interior lights. We would take them from regular fixtures to LED. And there is a need to replace the building management system at Jerome also.
Before we... At the three buildings on the North Bradford side of town, I met with UI last week, and they are doing an energy audit in our buildings, and there's a lot of incentive programs. When they complete that, I'm going to bring it to Mike Paulus to discuss potentially with the council. So it's all part of the green initiative that the town is moving towards, and they try to incentivize opportunities to go with LED lighting, to look at more heating and cooling mechanisms, and if they're outdated, they're not functioning, ways to use grant monies to increase or, I should say, to decrease your amount of usage. So it's really the preliminary stage right now. Over the next couple of weeks, or the next week, they should complete those walkthroughs that Chodi has been working with and to take them into the boiler rooms and how we're functioning. So I'll share that information, and that's something that potentially could show big benefits moving forward with our energy usage.
At the intermediate school, we are also asking for the same lighting upgrade, as well as the auditorium, the lighting upgrade, parking lot paving, and again, we need to replace the building management system there. We, there is one item here on, for the high school, but this, if the new school is approved, we would naturally take this off. But right now, Bill Chodi said that we do need to replace the building management system at the high school as well, because it is just not performing. There are a couple things for central office. We would like to bring the gas piping from Middletown Avenue over to Totucket Valley and this building. The price here of $100,000 represents the Board of Education share of the town project.
They would also include the firehouse and the ambulance garage, so it would be a two-part deal. Our portion would be the $100,000 with the two other facilities right running as well.
And if that piping project went through, we would convert this building in Totucket from an oil-burning building to a natural gas building. And then finally, I am asking for money for a new financial system. And so all of those items together total up to a request of $658,104.
You are, obviously, everyone's aware here of the capital. The council would look at it and then decide on a number, and then you would come back and, and choose if there's priorities that you definitely feel are higher than others. But these are things we wanted to, you know, look at these buildings, but the paving piece, if you drive through the middle school, and that part of the school is done, not that long ago, but already it's in need of repair because obviously the windows, and when they paved down, you know, they're not putting down the buffer that they used to, and it just doesn't last. So there's a lot of potholes in all of them. So that's something that's going to be ongoing, and that may be something that we're talking, you know, we accrue monies. But I'm hoping with UI, with these management systems in the buildings on the North Bradford side of town, that we can really make a difference with these buildings without having to go deep into our pockets through these incentives.
I have a question. For the financial software, was this a collaboration with Town Council as well? Because I know that we've had that joint meeting, and I haven't heard any feedback on where that project is. So I'm going to guess that something we're going to need to either have another joint meeting about with Town Council before we present it. I don't know where our recommendation is.
We're waiting on, to see. I spoke to Mike Paulus. I know that some things were sent over to...
Bloom Shapiro.
Bloom Shapiro. So as recently, what, last week he sent?
Yes.
Over information to Bloom Shapiro. We added this to the capital account for two reasons. If nothing happens with the consolidation, we want to have it. If something happens with the consolidation, we want to have it. So it's a number right now, and it's not something that... We should have something from Bloom Shapiro, I'm guessing, within the next two weeks. There's no more data for them to collect.
Right.
It's their turn to present now. So we've had, obviously, for the high school, we've had the presentation here. We're looking to go in February for that piece. Bloom Shapiro needs to get with us now.
Okay. So you were collaborating with Town Council on that, so it's not going to be like, hey, okay, good.
But this figure is just for us?
Us, this is for us.
So they would have to...
Right. And ours would be much higher because, obviously, you know, what we're doing, I would guesstimate that, you know, we have 300 employees and...
Right.
And what we're doing versus, you know, probably a third of their size, then if you couple them, and we did it, and we packaged them together...
That figure includes cloud hosting, it includes installation, the data transition, and the actual system. The annual maintenance...
Twenty-two thousand.
Is only $22,000, and we spend probably a little more than double now for the current system that we have. And that does not get us all of the training and support that we need.
Do you know if the town has got a new system? Or they'll just get a new system? The town?
They have new computers. I know that.
I don't know if they're, I don't know why I thought that they had a new system as well.
I don't think they do. I don't think they did because they kept saying that they wanted the same as us, the same as us. So I don't think, especially with this going on with the consolidation, that they would put the money out to do that. I don't think it's a new system.
I thought they had it like a year or two ago. I could be wrong.
Who's the new computer? Are they doing the computers? No. But I think they did upgrade.
So that does complete our presentation, so we'll take questions.
Yeah. I see all these prices from oil to gas. Did you guys consider from oil to electricity? Because if you have to pay for all of these costs to hook up to gas, you already have electricity here. Would it be cheaper to just convert from oil to electricity as opposed to gas?
So we're piped right now for oil in these buildings. So what we do in some of our facilities is we go dual burner. So we keep our existing oil, and then we add the ability to switch to gas, and it's much more cost-efficient than electric heating. Electric heating is astronomical. And then we would have to re... all of our buildings, which would...
I was just curious because it's Wallenford Electric here?
Only on this side of town. This one, up here for us, right, these two buildings.
Right. And I know Wallenford Electric is a lot cheaper than UI.
Right.
So I was just wondering, if the conversion from oil to electricity would be more economical than oil to gas, because gas also has potential, if there's ever a leak or something, it could be, you know, dangerous to the, you know, to the people in the building, whereas electricity, you're not going to have that problem.
Right. So we're dual-fueled on the other side of town at MBIS and the, yeah, MBIS and the auditorium. And so we have gone back and forth, and we've never had a problem with it. For heating, for heating, obviously. Cooling is, you know, electric for us, and Wallenford is much cheaper up here than down there. But to convert those and do electric, it would be off their charts.
So you had mentioned that you looked at the copier vendor?
Yes.
In the budget, is that the new number, or...
Yes.
That's the new number. Okay, so it's already reflected.
Yes.
Do you remember how much cost savings you had? You were vague about it, but I know you were happy about it, so I'm guessing it's...
It's over $100,000.
Yeah.
Very sweet.
So that's just like a big win when you have the camera running. That's a big one, and you should give yourself credit for that. So, thank you very much. How about our transportation contract? Like, what does that look like? Like, is there any cost savings in that, or we write about where we need to be? Are there any safety features we don't have that we need, like...
So I actually have DATCO coming in tomorrow for a meeting. They were supposed to come in about a week and a half or two weeks ago, but they were ill, so they needed to reschedule. So we're going, those are going to be some of the questions that we'll talk about tomorrow. When I looked at the contract for now, I was basically looking at the cost for athletic trips and our regular education, and making sure that the numbers that I have in this proposed budget are to, are the best accurate estimate that I can, I can do right now. And then, of course, tomorrow, we'll ask some of those questions.
Okay.
We had talked, I know before, and Suzanne brought this up about the behavior specialist. I'm putting it out there to you with existing monies that are in this budget for next year. Looking at the possibility, we talked about numbers of identified and really looking at an increase in K5, an instance where we... at an increase in K5, on instance, where we would, I think, greatly benefit by having a shared person that's here five days a week, full day. Is that something that the board is interested in? If we were to compare budgeted money for services of a vendor coming in versus the difference of us potentially, and Martha and I had this conversation, with a person that we would hire with benefits to share, and if it's something that you thought was feasible to look into, we would explore that. And this would be the time to do it, as we're building this schedule.
I personally would like a cost comparison.
Suzanne, I'm kind of putting you on the spot.
Sorry Suzanne.
No, that's okay.
We talked about it last year, and it's a, given the current budget, I would ask for an increase of one day per week. We currently contract places for two days a week, and so I already have the cost of that additional one day per week. A BCBA salary, you can hire them yourself full-time, is between $80,000 and $100,000. So right now, we have $80,000 in our budget. In order to, if we were to hire another person, we would certainly have to pay for benefits, and approximately $6,000 in terms of training for that individual. So I think it's helpful for us to know that we have quite a chunk of money already in the budget, and we're to consider creating that position. Certainly the benefit of it, you know, it's always a challenge. If we had the BCBA full-time, we really feel like we could make a difference in managing behavior, in training staff, and supervising our staff, and making sure that they're being consistent in implementing behavior plans. All of those things would take us a long way to ensuring the students could be more successful in our schools, rather than having to place them out. So certainly it was a real struggle last year when we had to place students out, and then we lost the full-time BCBA, and you wonder which way is the right way to go. We know that the students that we're working with, that behavior challenges are the number one challenge that our students are facing, and it's the number one thing that leads us to get place students out of district. So certainly having a full-time BCBA would make a significant difference. You know, she's always in the wrong school at the wrong time, and something's happening, and trying to spread her services way too thin. We certainly put things into place and develop behavior plans, but one of the things that's missing from that is her ability to monitor students, staff, in implementing those plans consistently. And I'm sure you all know that when you do something consistently, it has positive effects. When we do something inconsistently, it takes longer to affect positive change, or it doesn't happen at all. And so that's really been a struggle for us in managing the needs of all of our students and needing our staff to be trained. We've also had a significant turnover here of professionals this year, last year as well. And so our professionals do very much of the work of implementing and supervising behavior intervention plans. We don't have someone that can train them and model for them and make sure that they are implementing those plans with fidelity. It limits the efficacy of that program, and so then it negatively impacts our students and doesn't allow them to be as successful in our schools as we can. So it's certainly an investment that I strongly believe is necessary for our children. I think that, and speaking with all of the administrative team, they heartily supported it last year, and I could put them on the spot, but I believe that they were heartily...
They see for that.
Because they all are somewhat of that, each day in their own screen.
Well, it compounds, right? If you don't correct behavior in K through five, you're just going to see it in six through eight, and you're going to see it in nine through 12, and it's actually something I was noticing this year, because I remember it being taken out of the budget last year. And I can see as kids are moving through the schools, I noticed behaviors moving along.
And they're still late.
And they, yeah, so this is truly an investment, and a long-term investment, not just a K through five investment.
If you're a little bit better in our program, if you're not that helpful, the Bridges Program serves a significant number of kids. This year, it's 45 students, and we have anticipated 49 students for next year. Each one of those kids' souls are such a great percentage of those students who would not be able to be served in our schools if we didn't have those programs. The Life Skills Program is very similar. Many of our students that have significant disabilities also have behavior issues, or their learnings, their learning disabilities are significant enough, they need a very individualized and behavioral approach to instruction. And then BCBA is training in that as well. So we serve about 35,700 kids in our Life Skills Program. And, you know, for those of you who have been around a very long time before, we have that, North Bramford had many, many students like that just now. So we've certainly benefited from all of our programs by having students stay in our school, because we strongly believe they're part of our school community. But even more so, having money to be able to fund other variety of programs for all of our students.
So what I'm...
I'm in favor of it.
That we're going to look at our current increase of one to two days, and budgeted amount of $80,000 plus $1,000, looking at the difference between a five-day person hired in that salary range, obviously with benefits and the training fee, and we'll bring it back to in our next budget meeting to show you the difference. And we can find it or add it, if we'd like to do it then. Okay?
Martha, can we go back just for one second?
Sure.
And I want to point out the new financial system.
Yes.
And it's $22,000 a year for maintenance.
For maintenance.
We're paying more than double that now for what we have.
Yes, so every time I call CMT, which is the third-party support company out of Michigan, for support and training, because as you know, the system was never really fully set up, and we haven't been trained on it, that costs. So every time I pick up the phone, there's a charge. I went to a CASBO meeting last week, which is the Connecticut Association of School Business Officials, and there were several people there who currently have ALIO in their districts. And in speaking to them, they also share the same problems that we have, and run into the same roadblocks. So it kind of led me to believe that it's really not just us, that it seems to be a systemic issue with the software itself.
Well, no, the reason I'm asking is because it's on the capital list, and that's not something that we have as much say or control over, that goes to the town council. And I mean, it'd be a good, you know, selling point that, in the long run...
If, when we get into the process, if town hall is looking to, whatever we're looking to...
Even if we don't consolidate, we should be on the same, we should be on the same financial system. I think it would make it so much easier. But I mean, it's a good selling point, though, if we're saving money, and it'll pay for itself in the long run if you're saving money.
It takes six years, and you pay for the cost of installing it, and then you're making, every year after that, you're making money.
Right.
Now, this is a system that Martha worked with.
Yeah, I worked, I worked...
Especially there's a real strong comparison of...
This is actually the new version. What I worked on in my previous district was called Profund, and Profund is being retired, but this is the new version of Profund. It's a Tyler Technologies software, and they also produce Munis and this Infinite Visions, and they've been around a long time, and I was very happy with the old system. This system that I'm proposing is actually cloud-hosted, and I know there are benefits to it, so I don't know if Bruce can speak to the benefits of cloud hosting versus what we have now, but that's another...
Maintaining, we don't have to maintain the hardware personally, so the problems are all on the other end, they keep it in the cloud, we just have to make sure that they guarantee it's going to be as safe as possible. That's the key.
Okay.
And they usually, you know, if they're in the cloud business...
They know what they're doing.
They know what they're doing.
Right.
And we're actually a team with them, I don't know if this is anybody, but the Cyber Security and we're going to town, working on, you know, collectively some of that with our, our system, so that we're not, not only are cloud anything here being hacked, you see the neighbor town that's happened a couple of times, I think the hand, this Hampton hit twice, and it compromised all their student information and financial records, so that's something that we're working with town hall on as well.
Yeah, as long as it's a collaboration with town hall on this, I just don't want to go, you know what I'm saying, I don't want to go into the capital meeting, or the budget meeting and say, oh, this is on our budget, surprise!
And we put it under capital for that reason.
Perfect.
And it's something that capital is really like, of town hall, and when Martha and I had the conversations, it's like, hey, let's put it out there. If it's something that they're interested in, we can do further leg work to see if we can get it down with a couple in town hall with it.
Exactly, okay. And to see if that program works for town.
For municipalities.
Yeah.
Right, it has to work for them. Do you know if in your district, the municipality uses it as well?
Well, we were a regional district, so we did not have a municipality, we still own. But as I said, Tyler Technologies does do Munis, which is more the town-based...
But the software anyway.
So being that it's the same company, I'm sure that would be compatible.
I know that's not the right one, though.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't like him to do that.
So, that being said, I don't know if there are any other questions. We will do our research and earn, we'll get the numbers back to, the numbers will be back. If there's any questions that's in hand, you can send them, there's questions to Martha, you have the information, and then we'll store and share all your questions, so we know what the questions are, and then we'll bring them back collectively here at next meeting.
So are there any public comments? Please be advised, they need to be limited to the items listed on the agenda. All right. The next budget workshop is scheduled for Thursday, February 6th, 6 o'clock. Is that one a question?
Yes.
6 o'clock? Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? In favor?